I need to work on how to quiet a crowd. Welcome to the March 6th Punta Gorda City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that all city council members are present and all city officials are present, and we will begin by standing for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our gracious, loving heavenly Father, first we thank you for the privilege of living in a country where we enjoy many freedoms provided by our founding fathers in their wisdom, the freedom to assemble and to speak our minds without fear of retribution. We also wish to invoke your special blessings on the results of our work in this council. The successes we have made are all with your help and guidance, and we should not forget to ask your continued blessings and guidance for those city employees who have contributed so much of their talents and personal commitments to the improvements of our city. All these things we pray to your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I want to recognize a guest that we have with us who met with Howard yesterday, and Howard said please stop by and come to our city council meeting. And this is Steve Laraway. He is a council member. Steve, he is standing back here. He is a council member in the city of St. Cloud, Minnesota, and he has purchased a home here in Punta Gorda. He is not yet a full-time resident, but anyway, we want to thank you for coming, and you compare and take notes, and you can take back what your experience was here to your fellow council members back in St. Cloud.
I'm right behind the counter. I look forward to more time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we will get started with, we have two proclamations this morning. In the first of these is the Archway Institute for Mental Health and Addictive Disorders Day, and Councilmember Matthews is going to read this.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation for the city of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Archway Institute for Mental Health and Addictive Disorders, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in St. Louis, Missouri, commits to support, advocate, and actively participate in promoting a drug-free Punta Gorda; and whereas the Archway Institute is committed to reducing the stigma surrounding these disorders by helping educate and bring awareness to individuals, families, and the community at large; and whereas the Archway Institute will provide financial assistance where possible to individuals in the Punta Gorda area who want to be in a recovery program but do not have the financial resources available; and whereas the Archway Institute will sponsor its first charity tennis mixer and fifth charity golf outing at Twin Isles Country Club on March 8th and 9th, 2019, with a significant portion of the proceeds being donated to Charlotte Behavioral Healthcare to assist individuals who want to be in a recovery program; and whereas Archway awarded grant funds to a number of structured sober living facilities in southwest Florida to be used as scholarships, and has provided grants to drug-free Punta Gorda in 2019 to help educate and increase awareness about the issues surrounding this disease in our community; and whereas education and awareness materials will be delivered to over 5,000 individuals in this area through various media. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that March 9, 2019, shall be known in the city of Punta Gorda as Archway Institute for Mental Health and Addictive Disorders Day, passed and duly adopted in this regular session this sixth day of March 2019. Signed Nancy Pravky, Mayor, City of Punta Gorda. And accepting will be Dan Stuckey.
Congratulations.
I just had a couple comments. Hard to believe it's been five years we've been in this town. The other is, our official business address is now Punta Gorda, Florida for Archway for National. Just wanted to let you know that.
Awesome.
And in our fifth year, by the end of March, we will have donated or given out grants of over $50,000 to Charlotte County for scholarships for individuals. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you was, the reason we come every year and ask you to read this long little thing is, it's all about visibility. We use, you are leaders of this town and area, and 30% of the population, families are dealing with a loved one with an addiction, alcohol or drug addiction in their family. Only 20% ever ask for professional help, with the number one reason is they're concerned about all our reaction to it. And as leaders, we use this to help lower the stigma in this town and ask, get people to ask for help. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Dan. And Dan, it's really important work that you do, and thank you for doing that here. The next presentation, our proclamation will be the Florida Surveyors and Mappers Week, and Councilmember Carey will read that.
It is my privilege to present this proclamation from the city of Punta Gorda to the surveyors and mappers. Whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the dawn of recorded history, and is instrumental in the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership, as well as the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction with its most familiar uses in the field of transportation, land development, communications, energy delivery, and mapping; and whereas surveyors and mappers are counted among the founding leaders of our country, including George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, among many others, and were instrumental in the formation of the layout of property boundaries in the United States, which have provided our citizens the enjoyment of property And whereas surveying and mapping profession requires special education and training, including the knowledge of math, trigonometry, and geometry, as well as the related physical and applied sciences tempered by the requirements of law, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, for evidence and possession; and whereas surveyors and mappers are uniquely qualified and licensed to determine and describe land and water boundaries for the management of natural resources and the protection of private and public property rights. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Florida Surveyor and Mappers Week, and invites all citizens to join surveyors and mappers in using their own talents for the good of the community, as well as recognizing and appreciating the talents of others. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this sixth day of March. City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Nancy Pravky. And accepting will be Derek Miller.
Great job.
Congratulations. You know, from an English teacher, to have to say geometry, trigonometry, and all those math terms is really something.
All at the same time? I know, it's terrible.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of all Florida surveyors and mappers in the state and in Charlotte County, thank you for this proclamation, and for the Florida Surveyors and Mappers Society also. Last week, or the week before, we did the, we put on a presentation, me and Bob Hagan. He's the city surveyor for the city of Sarasota at the Florida Frontier Days Festivals, which was quite the turnout, and that was a pretty good little deal. We had some antique instruments set up, we had newer stuff set up, so all the little kids come on Friday, I think it's the fourth graders. They came on Friday, they could look through the instruments, get to know how we did the things originally, how we surveyed, and then how we do stuff nowadays. It was, it was pretty cool. Next year, February 29th and 28th, it's a leap year, so we're at the end of the, it's the last weekend of February. Come on out there, you guys, it's right down here at the Punta Gorda History Park. Check us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from Leah Valente, the district director for our U.S. Senator Rick Scott. Welcome, Leah.
Thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to take an opportunity and introduce myself. You know, one of the great things about having a new Congress, new election year, is you have a new governor, you have a new senator, congressman, so I think it's important that you get to know who those folks are and who represents you in your county, municipality, your city, whatever it may be. So I'm here today just to let you know, my name's Leah Valente, as she stated. I'm very familiar with Charlotte County. I've covered Charlotte County with government relations for the past 10 years, so you're represented hopefully very well. Excuse my informal attire today, I'm, part of my district covers our rural ag land, and I'm leaving here to go to Hendry County to do an ag tour, so usually I would be a little bit more dressed up for you today. But again, my district covers from Naples, Collier County, up to Sebring, so it encompasses seven counties. The office will eventually be in Naples, Florida, but I'm here. I will be working kind of just everywhere right now from my home, as our office is not up and running just quite yet. I don't have a formal email yet, but we're still working all those details out. The senator obviously was your governor before, so constituent casework is new for his office. It's not new for me, which is great, but any federal agency that you need issues or you have issues with, if you don't want to reach out to your congressman, or you want to reach out to us, we will have that up and running very soon on the website. You have a privacy statement that you can fill out, but really just an opportunity to come and reach out, introduce and reintroduce myself to folks today. I definitely know some of you, some of you are new, but just wanting to get out, talk to constituents that maybe don't know what your senator can do for you. So if you have any questions, all these lovely folks know how to get ahold of me, and if you have any questions, obviously you can go to the website as well. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity for having me today. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a wonderful day. All blocks.
I think warm is the mode of the day, as opposed to making sure we're dressed up. Okay. The next presentation is for the Volunteers in Policing 20 Year Milestones for Kathleen Stanton and Jim Bellevue. Chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Chief Pam Davis, Punta Gorda Police Department. Well, first of all, thank you very much for recognizing our two volunteers that have 20 years of service. A lot of people don't even do 20 years in their regular job, and these two folks have done 20 years of volunteer work. We actually, our volunteer program started in 1997, so 22 years, and they've been here with us for 20. Two, we're going to start with Kathleen Stanton. She is our volunteer in our records unit. She greets the visitors that come in, and she keeps me straight, keeps everybody straight in our department, and takes good care of our visitors when they come in. And then Jim Bellevue, he's recently retired from the volunteer program. He was a Marine unit volunteer, and we're going to miss you. A lot of great experience up here. Last, just to give you guys an idea of how many volunteer hours they put in, last year, almost 12,000 hours, and that's equivalent to about six full-time people. So in January, we had, just this year in January, 1,361 hours, which is 300 more than last January. So it's steadily growing. Right now, we're at 82 volunteers. We did make it up to almost 100 over the last year, and you see these, these people in the yellow and black, they're our newest program within the volunteer unit, they're the bike volunteer unit. So you're going to see them out and about at the Harbor Walk, all kinds of different areas, doing bicycle safety education, and please stop them and say hi. So it's a great new program. I think it's like one of the only ones in this area, so we're pretty excited about it. But thank you, Kathleen, thank you, Jim, for all the time that you put in and for, we couldn't do what we do as a department without our volunteers. I think everybody knows by now how I feel about these guys, and we're the best in the country, so thank you very much. Thank you. Can you say anything? No? Okay.
I love it. That's a good one.
You're right, the Volunteers in Policing is an amazing group, and so many times you have reported things that have been going on in the community, and the Volunteers in Policing helped out, like when the traffic signal was, was not working at 41 in the Kia Stah, and that was-
And then we had the issue on Shreve, and they were there directing traffic. I mean, that keeps us, the patrol officers from able, they're able to continue doing, answering calls for service and not tied up for all that time, so they're amazing.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now is the time for introduction of board and committee member nominees. If your name is on the list as a nominee for a board or committee, and you'd like to introduce yourself to the council, please step to the podium. We'd love to meet you.
I'm here once again to introduce myself as an interested applicant for the pickleball committee.
Could someone close the door to, please? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
My name is Debbie Sarkisian, and I live at 910 Connecta, which is part of District 2. Punta Gorda has been my home for the last six years. We moved here from Indiana, and while I lived there, I was employed by a company called Honeywell, where I worked for 37 years. During my last few years of work, my title was project manager. So in that role, I belonged to many committees, both as a leader and as a member. I enjoyed working on committees and was often sought after to be a member due to work ethic and ease of working with. I'm a great team player, and I'm definitely a voice of reason. Helping to find short and long-term solutions to pickleball in Punta Gorda is definitely in my wheelhouse, and is very important to me as I am an avid pickleball player, and this sport's a daily part of my retired life. I've been to many venues across South Florida, so I have a good sense of what works well and what doesn't, and I would love to be part of this newly formed pickleball committee, and would appreciate your consideration to be part of this team. Thank you.
Good morning. Julie Moriarty, I'm Gulfview Road, I've been a resident here for three years. Submitted application to the pickleball committee as a non-player. I do own a paddle and a ball, but I don't play. So, oh, and also District 3, so we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Jeff Carmen, 309 Shreve. I'm applying for the pickleball committee for Punta Gorda. I am hopeful to be on a committee that is rational, with agendas neither hidden nor open, and where everyone can work together to come up with a proper solution for pickleball in the city of Punta Gorda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Beth Geek, formerly Beth Geek, I'm Beth Magnan. I'm retired from being the executive director for the Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association for 12 years, and I've lived here with my husband, John, since 2003, and I would like to serve on this committee and to find a solution for our residents, and I would appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Gene Palowski, and I'm a student of good government, and that's why I come here, and I'm amazed at the guy flying in on Legion from St. Cloud, because he's going to see something about good government. And that's a pleasure. I've been coming to these meetings for 14 years now. I bought in Punta Gorda, May 29th of 2004, just before Charlie. Didn't move in until 2005. Volunteered with Team Punta Gorda, and because of my background, I started on the research committee. I'm retired as a loss control manager and also a safety engineer for you folks. I'm also certified in pollution control, agricultural insurance, and I do commercial appraisals on large buildings, million-ups, commercial buildings, things like that. Also a commercial investigator who does internal investigations on companies. My applications, however, are ballroom dancing, and I'm a competitive sailor. And addition to that, I spent 50 years as a visual designer, choreographer for major large ensembles, and even got into Lynn's area baton twirling and judging the national championships of baton work. I offer you a balanced approach to this. I worked with the city in many different areas in the development of the trail system here in town. I've served on the maritime committee for Team Punta Gorda, I'm on the architectural committee, and pedaled and played, and you've been owed me best as being the founder of the bicycle loner program in town here, so I did, started that in 2010.
Yes, you did.
I started a real successful program. So I offer you my experiences, which are pretty broad. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gene.
I'll have a twirl off with you.
Both are twirls?
No. Oh, I said I'll have a twirl off with you.
Oh, I don't twirl.
Hello? I'm Jim Round. I volunteered to join this committee because I would like to find some resolutions for the pickleball problems in Punta Gorda. I can't beat that guy's resume, so I'm just going to say, I'm here to volunteer if you need me for District 1 or at-large. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good morning. I'm Craig Eric from District 2. I don't have a lot to add to my application. I will say my family has been full-time residents in Punta Gorda since 1978, so I'm not a newcomer to Punta Gorda. However, I do want to share my disappointment on how many Punta Gorda residents see this issue and this committee as a referendum of thumbs up or thumbs down for pickleball. They see this as a very partisan topic based on their personal wants rather than an opportunity to work for the good of the entire community. I find that unfortunate. I was disappointed to have two of the candidates call me a couple of days ago to get a reading on my preferences before the committee did any fact-finding and/or even had its first meeting. It was as if they were trolling the waters for the city council in making the candidate choices. Should I not be chosen to represent my district? I would be happy to serve as one of the two at-large committee members, and I bring over a decade of community experience up in Manhattan. I served on my co-op board for seven years, representing over 400 households, and the last year as president of my co-op board. So I'm familiar with taking in all kinds of viewpoints and working for, for a solution that benefits everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, I'm Rick Sarkisian, full-time resident of Punta Gorda, and I've applied for the pickleball committee. I can objectively contribute to the committee. I was trained as an engineer, and as you probably have noted from some of the emails I sent to council, I look at issues in a logical, fact-based manner. My 30-year career in technical and commercial roles at a large international company, I have extensive participation in both intra- and inter-company committees. I represented my company in a variety of industry-based committees, and in one case has elected committee chairman multiple times. These committees many times consisted of representatives with widely varied objectives. They had similar characteristics to the pickleball committee in that there were both political and technical aspects, with team-building and census-making required. I believe my demeanor and experiences would be valuable to the committee and ask you to appoint me to the pickleball committee.
Thank you.
On a lighter note, I am trying to become-
And your name is?
Wendy Mueller, sorry.
That's okay.
I have applied for the Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate, and I would like you to consider me. I have dealt with zoning in Georgia and New Jersey, building commercial buildings and residential buildings, and have had to have zoning changed in order to get most of those buildings built. And so I have a little background in it, and I hope that you'll consider me. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anyone else? If not, then we will adjourn as a city council and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
You can greet, exhale. Morning, Nancy, Mayor.
You've been to church already?
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
And you?
Seven o'clock.
Good morning, Jane.
You didn't go, huh? Crashes?
No.
Are we all set? Okay.
You left the fire to burn.
We'll call this the March 6th Community Redevelopment Agency meeting to order, and the first item of the agenda is citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only. So that would be the approval of the minutes, the CRA project status report, the discussion of possible appropriation of funds for the rebranding of the city's wayfinding system. Those are the items on our agenda today, so if anyone would like to discuss those items, you can come to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
I live in Historic District. I know I'm like a bad penny, I'm here all the time, but first, we hope that you will take the staff recommendation and accept the proposed redesign of the pickleball court area, especially since it has a potential savings of $100,000. There are a lot of tough decisions being made over pickleball, and as you continue to make them, please remember some other simple facts. We're forming a fact-finding committee today, and these are some other facts I want you to bear in mind as you make your decisions. Fact one, as long as pickleball is in the park, it will be a source of misery for some nearby homeowners, a burden for some others, a blight on the park, and a source of painful friction within the city. Some of you will consider that an exaggeration, because you haven't seen the worst effects firsthand, as I have. I live right next door to the people that are most deeply affected by this. I can't help that you see it that way. I wish I could change that. It would save me some sleepless nights. A fact two, the players who are so passionate about pickleball, and that seems to be all of them, will still enjoy themselves even if they, if they have to play at Pickleplex. They, they just will. They enjoy it wherever they play it. I can understand that they're passionate about it, but they'll still be passionate about it at Pickleplex. I can't prove that either, but I'm sure of it. Fact three, even with landscaping, the fencing will be a blotch blocking views in the park, creating a fragile nuisance in high winds that because of the fetch are even more potent in the park than elsewhere, shedding blame upon the neighborhood for creating a blight in the park, and in the words of one council member, looking pretty obnoxious. Please weigh these facts, and I'll even tone them down. The bonus, the extra indulgence of players continuing to play in Gilchrist Park on top of Pickleplex and the other 90 courts in the county against helping homeowners regain the simple enjoyment of their homes. An added indulgence granted to people who are already enjoying themselves versus an appeal for help from homeowners and other park users who would enjoy an atmosphere free of pickleball pops. I hope you weigh carefully, and this is fact four, which embodies a broad democratic principle. Calling on one group to sacrifice their health and well-being and to keep sacrificing it for the pure enjoyment of another isn't what we do in this country. Be careful of this one, because the next time a call goes out, it could go to you and your neighbors, in which case I'd have to step right back up here. Nobody wants that. Nobody, least of all me. You must have gotten the message at the last council meeting. This will not be fixed without your strong governance. Please fix this. Thank you.
I thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that the item on our agenda is only about the, it's only about whether we are going to move some enhancements to area two. It is not a discussion about pickleball.
Well, it pertains, it pertains to the courts in the court area.
I understand, I just want to make it clear. Thank you.
Hi, Rick Sarkisian again. I too want to comment on the proposed redesign for pickleball court area, assuming I'd want to- court area. Assuming I'd want to comment on the slide that's in the CRA, is that appropriate? The only comment I would make is that the proposed redesign shows the ADA access as being on the side where the new 10-foot fence will be built. And being familiar with that area, I know that egress into the courts is going to just automatically transfer to the Harbor Walk side. So, I think it would be much more appropriate to have that ADA access on that side. And I understand that a lot of the concrete is being removed, but since that Harbor Walk side where there's already an existing gate will become the entryway, it'd be nice if we could at least put a concrete pad there so it doesn't become a quagmire.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, with that, then, we will proceed.
Can we have one more?
Please. Oh, we have one more?
Yes. I'm just a little-
Name please.
Oh, Craig Eric. I'm just a little confused. Why is a ruling or appropriation being made to alter the pickleball court before the pickleball committee even has its first meeting? Shouldn't it be the other way around after the fact gathering?
Thank you. This is, the comment period is to provide comments. It's not a Q and A session, but thank you for your question. Okay, then, we'll get started. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the February 6th meeting.
Make a move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February the 6th, 2018, 19.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 6th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. The next is the CRA Project Status Report for February 2019, and our CRA Executive Director, Mr. Koenig.
Howard Koenig, CRA Director. This is our monthly report. And this shows the marina activity. The reason it compares, a year ago, remember, a year ago, we had some slips we were working on from Hurricane Irma. So, that's why the increase is the way it is, but the marina is busting it, it seems, right now. And the community room has a lot of, had a lot of activity in February. See the number of liverboards. Pump-out vessel, you see the comparison of January and then last February as well. Gallons pumped has gone up. Herald Court Center, the Dream Salon, their contractor was cleared for January 15th. They've done minimal work in there, so we're trying to push them. The mural at the Gilchrist Park Playground restroom will be done very soon. That's kind of a work-in-progress. Looks very nice, very colorful. The restroom for the other restroom by the pavilions is moving forward. So far, no significant issues. Our folks or our crew is doing the utility work on West Reta prior to us starting work at Gilchrist Park Phase II construction.
How long do we expect that Reta will be closed for this work?
Well, this is a, it'll be a little while. It's going to be, it's going to be a little while. I mean, there's a lot of, we have to do a whole sewer replacement in there. Don't expect it done for another couple of months.
Okay.
It's going to be a little while.
Okay.
Maybe sooner, but I, let's not.
That's okay. We just need to keep letting people know.
As far as Harbor Walk Phase Two, you will be getting a contract very soon for a construction engineering firm, actually CEI. Once you approve that, they will be helping us inspect whoever we hire to do the work on Phase Two. They have some comments regarding the design plans. They would like to get with Wyler Engineering before the bids go out to fine-tune some of the maintenance of traffic that shows on the documents, beef it up a little so we don't have any change orders in that area. The contractors know exactly what they're bidding on. So, we've delayed the bidding process a couple of months. And this is the diagram of what folks have been talking about. We are, once you approve everything today, we will be finalizing the purchase of the Acousta Fence material. We're on track with that very quickly. We will be replacing the four-foot fence on one side, replacing it with a 10-foot fence, putting the green material up. By doing that, we will, we recommend eliminating from the construction documents the benches and the picnic tables and everything in that area right there. If you look at the, if that right there, by removing that, I think I have an estimate of around $65,000 to $100,000 from the construction bid. We can always put that in later if we need to. But we also have the ADA access that was commented on earlier. That is required. We do have ADA, we will have access from the Harbor Walk as well, but it's required to have that ADA access there.
Will that create an opening that's going to allow the sound then to come out?
Come out.
Or is that going to have a gate?
Gate.
It'll have a gate?
Yes.
Okay.
Look, that's required. So, we will be, I know the conversation, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the last CRA meeting, we talked about letting the pickleball players play on the four courts closest to the Harbor Walk. Will the Acousta Fence folks feel that in order to mitigate the sound better, you want to keep the courts for play closest to the material? So, that's what we will be, our recommendation is to keep those courts closest to the material in play, and the ones farthest away out of play, because we're reducing from eight to four when Pickleplex opens.
Is there discussion on this item?
I have something at the end of the-
At the end, okay. Then we'll wait till the end. Okay.
So, unless we hear otherwise, that's how we're proceeding.
Do you want to bring it up now, or do you-
Well, I agree that I think that we should eliminate the accoutrements at the pickleball courts for this, at this moment in time. I would like to see us do as much remediation as we can to fix the problem that we currently have going on. However, I do have a suggestion. If we do decide to save that money at this part of the park, I would like us to revisit taking the driveway closest to the hotel and taking out that horrible circle that's at the end of it that is getting all cracked and broken because people don't understand that there's raised pavement in there and the bricks are all cracked and broken already. And I would recommend that we reconsider looking at making an elbow and extend that driveway in front of the pavilion as we had previously discussed once or twice. I would like us to see us use that money toward doing that repair and putting another section of driveway and parking in front of the pavilion so that we have what we had before the renovation, so that we have additional parking in the park. We have a problem right now. We have restaurant workers parking in the Gilchrist spaces every single day. I have proof of that from several emails I've received and comments I've received. The fact is, we don't have enough parking at that end of the park, and I would like us to reconsider putting the elbow back in and making that L-shaped driveway with additional parking and use the money for that.
Is there other discussion?
I think we're going to get a comment here.
Oh.
Yes, excuse me. Did you-
Did you have a, you know?
No, no. We were just discussing Carmelus. That's all right.
Oh, okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Do you want to go ahead, and then we'll come back and we'll finish the discussion?
Right.
Okay.
Actually, the only other slide was the library.
Okay.
That's progressing quite nicely. So, as I said, unless we hear otherwise, we're moving forward with our plans for the Acousta Fence and the court removals and-
I would agree with Mr. Eric that we should wait until after the pickleball committee comes to some conclusions, or they're not going to make a recommendation to council, but they will present some findings to us, and I think that that committee then could present some thoughts on that. I think after we hear back from them.
So, you don't want us to put up the material?
No, I didn't say that. It's, you want, you're proposing to remove all of the items that you had on the list?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm saying I would agree with gentleman who spoke and asked the question about waiting until after the pickleball committee presents our findings to decide whether we want to add something back in or not.
Oh, you mean after the, after ourselves?
After, yes.
Okay.
I would agree. I mean, that's the value of having this citizen group.
I would also like to ask the question, what are we going to do with the other four courts besides take the nets down?
To be decided.
Right now, we don't have any plans for it.
I agree. I think we should wait and make any decisions about what's going to happen at that spot in the park until the pickleball committee can do their thing.
Yes, that's what I mean.
I think it's way too premature to be doing something right now when we don't have a clue what's going to happen yet.
Yes.
That's, again, absent the placement of the sound barriers.
Yes, I think the sound barrier is an immediate solution.
Yeah.
That will help, but I said, in the meantime.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The sound barrier needs to go up at this point, especially since Pickleplex is now backlog-ed up to May, so we have to do something now.
Right.
And I'd like to point out, as in the previous discussions we had, if a solution were to require the removal of the pickleball courts altogether from Gilchrist to another location, we've already determined that the material itself, which is the majority of this cost, would not be wasted and is movable to that said location. And that would be one of the issues that the committee would be able to take into consideration as they do their fact-finding mission.
That's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up, because I've had residents comment on why are we wasting money and not realize that we can reuse this.
Yeah, we can reuse it. It's, it is a movable asset.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and that was why I asked that question in the first place, because I, you know, it's important that no matter, if it has to be moved anywhere, we can take that stuff and use it someplace else. So, that's a really big deal.
Yeah, there's also a perception that all the pickleball players are not from Punta Gorda, when in fact, we have had many residents move here because of these courts. So, we are really having to consider everyone in the community. And when we created these courts, the courts, everyone was in complete agreement that we should create the courts. So, it was really not until after. The courts attracted a whole lot of people here that it really became more of an issue that we need to discuss. So, it's, we're all working together to come up with a win, if it's possible to come up with a win-win.
Yeah.
Is what we're trying to achieve. So, did you get the answer to your question?
Staff and I are having a disagreement.
Uh-oh.
I understand, based on our conversation, that we're putting up the Acousta Fence material on the fence.
Yes.
And we're taking out of the construction bid all the picnic tables, the benches, that whole area there to be decided later on, right? Because we need to keep the bidding process moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
We are in agreement.
So, they understand.
And we, and as you have said, we can decide at a later time, and what we are all saying, later time, we want to wait till after we hear back from the pickleball committee.
Yeah, we don't want to delay the construction process any more than-
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, you know, Councilmember Math, Vice Mayor Matthews' suggestion, that's another project that I think is, it's certainly worthy of consideration at some point in time.
We are going to revisit the, we have a cost estimate for that way back when, and we'll resurrect it and put it back on an agenda.
Okay.
I would definitely like to take another look at that.
Charlie?
Yeah, with so much discussion of the committee, a question of process here, and I think everyone must understand that that committee isn't empowered to bring back recommendations to this board, okay? I've had some people comment most recently about, oh, that can recommend, they're going to recommend this, or they're going to recommend that, and we understand that because of the sunshine requirements, that can't be. But fact-finding may very well require the expenditure of funds, whether it's for a formal engineered study of sound, whether it's for other activities that are going to require access to a pocketbook. So, the question is, how do we empower, enable this committee to have access to funding that in their determination with their fact-finding mission will be necessary to come back to this board with something?
Staff, staff will provide them as much to address any questions they have as best as we can. If we can do a lot of that in-house, normally, a lot of it we can do in-house, we will do that, and as part of our job. So, I don't envision hiring consultants, at least I don't. Of course, then again, we don't have the committee yet. We don't quite know where they're going with it yet. We, as a staff, will be committed to doing as much as we can in-house to avoid potential costs. But until we get that committee together and until they start meeting, we don't know where it's going to go.
Okay. Forewarned is forearmed.
Gary?
I think this is a point well-taken. I think we're going to be able to do this, but just to rephrase something Howard said, the committee shouldn't know where they're going yet either, okay? So, as they start doing their work and their due diligence and the staff provides it, there could be, could become a situation where they may need a little bit more than we could provide, and they may not. We don't know. And if they do, then at that point, I think then it would be appropriate for the committee to come back before us, along with staff, with a recommendation to go a little bit further, whatever that is, and then we would have to make that determination. But we can't make these determinations, but point being made, we should be well-aware and conscious that we might have to make that type of determination in the future.
Exactly.
I just want to say it for the record.
Yes, that's, Jane?
Is there a timeframe on all of this?
We have set a timeframe of 90 days.
Okay.
We want this to be, we want people to act in, with some sense of urgency. We did not want this to be drawn out.
But that wouldn't preclude that if they did have, they need that little extra help, that we could extend that another 30 days or whatever it is to do that. We would, that would be in our discretion.
We can always make a decision on something. We can always choose to provide some funds if there are funds available or needed, but we're trying to act with a sense of urgency on this.
Right.
Any other questions for Howard? You're, you know, conversing back there. Is there something you would like to?
No.
Oh, okay. Are we all okay? Okay, anything else on the presentation? All right, then let's move to the next item, the discussion of and possible appropriation of funds for the rebranding of the city's wayfinding system.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager. This agenda item is being brought to you, brought back to you for review and discussion. Steph was directed to bring it back with the additional cost, planning costs, as well as more detailed information. Your packet contains both. There are two attached sheets in there regarding the pricing, and depending on which way the city will go with DO- city will go with DOT, if DOT will allow us to resurface the existing signs. We estimate approximately $50,000 plus to just resurface it. The second spreadsheet, if DOT, the second spreadsheet indicates that if DOT requires additional signage or a change in the signage and we cannot use the same ones, which we don't foresee, that would cost us $136,000 plus. So we recommend appropriation of the funds for the engineering so we can determine which way the staff will be going.
Question?
Charlie?
Joan, I was just astounded by the unit cost for a new sign, not the resurfacing. Ten times the cost of a replacement skin. And obviously, the cost of the installation and so forth is the same regardless of whatever. I know in some of the background I read, there've been discussions with FDOT in terms of the requirements because these are gonna be placed on state right-of-ways and so forth. Do we have an indication, not necessarily a commitment, but an indication from FDOT that the skin approach may be appropriate? Can we go in there feeling that this may be the way?
We do have an indication. It was vague, there was, it was non-committed, but we didn't get an indication from the reviewer of the project that that's, that would be acceptable. But again, once they get a hold of it, I, I don't know what they'll do, so.
Because we're talking, if that doesn't happen, we're talking about a very large project when we roll in the engineering development. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I reached out to my contact at FDOT this week, and he responded and got Steph from his staff to communicate with Joan and Urban Design this week. They have discussed extensively what has to happen. They have given an indication that they would be amenable to allowing us to reskin the signs, which I'm very excited about. And it just proves that having good working relationships outside of the city do make a difference. But just as important, I'm not comfortable signing off on, it's either $50,000 or $136,000. I mean, we're talking about $86,000 difference. I'm not ready to sign off on anything until, and we still don't know what the, what the actual production and installation costs are gonna be. I, I don't, I don't do this. This is not, this is not acceptable to me. We need total project cost before we can approve something. And we should be doing this background stuff before we bring this to council, in my opinion. But this is, there's a major substantial difference in the amount of money the two proposals represent here. I'm not, I'm not willing to sign off on either one at the moment.
I agree. Much more palatable if it's on the low end.
Well, and FDOT seems very amenable. They've been, they've been very agreeable, and they, I have a good working relationship with them because of my position on the MPO Board. So I took the liberty of making the call and trying to communicate and see where we could go and how we could expedite a decision on their part, and they are very willing to talk to us. So that's very important. That's a very big part of the decision of this. But until we have a final answer from them, I don't really, I'm not comfortable making a decision.
I mean, we've known that in the long time that we've had that FDOT approval was, I mean, necessary, it's on the road. But I'd say we shouldn't nickel and dime this. I mean, what keeps the city above water is our commercial district, and this is a necessary component of it. I find that we shouldn't, we're very, like, free with spending money on things that are not bringing income to the city and something that directly relates to our city's viability where we're trying to, like, dissect. I really think it's very important we move forward with our wayfinding. I think this is, this is something we, I just don't understand how we nickel and dime for things that actually are important and then other things we just spend, spend, spend. This is necessary for our city to be financially viable. This is necessary for both our residents and our, and our visitors to be able to maintain this. This is, this is part of what makes a city happen. Wayfinding is one of the most important components of a city's commercial viability.
Lynn?
Respectfully, this is not nickel and diming. This is the difference of $86,000, and we can't move forward with the signage either way until we know what FDOT is gonna do. So I am not, I'm not saying we should hold the project up. I'm saying let's get a definitive answer from FDOT before we make any more decisions.
But we have no choice. FDOT, whatever they say, they are above us. Their answer is gonna be what we have to pay. It's not, has nothing to do with us whatsoever. FDOT is gonna say what FDOT is gonna say. They are our superior. We're not their superior.
I'm not willing to sign off.
Unfortunately, this is not a question of we get to do what we want in home rule. This is a good example of that. The way I'm reading this and understanding is just as Mr. Cummings just reiterated, we have to do one or the other. We don't know which one or the other. Our preference is to do the reskining. We have some indications they may allow us to do the reskining, but if they choose that we aren't allowed to do the reskining, we still have to do it. We don't have a choice. So I think that we just need, we have, it's prudent just to go forward at this point in time. We can be irritated as much as we want about not having the lack of home rule decision-making power, but that's not the case. The case is, the state is gonna dictate what we are or aren't able to do, and what we have before us is the cost is if the state says this, this is what's gonna cost us. If the state says this, this is what's gonna cost us. But in either case, we're gonna have to do it, or we're gonna be out of compliance. At least, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
They have to see what we are proposing in order for them to make that decision to move forward. So without those engineering plans to submit to them, I believe that's why they are saying one or the other, and they're not being as committed as they could be. Once they have those plans in view, then they'll be able to make that decision. But without us moving forward on the engineering plans, we will not have the ability to have them say definitely yes.
So this is not the argument of the chicken and the egg. This is, the argument is, is we have to tell them what we want to do and what we can do, and they will tell us which one we have to, which one they will allow us to do.
Correct.
I mean, they could say we could, we could reskin it. We could choose to not reskin it and spend the more money. That would be our choice, but we can't go the other way around. So.